Things like that, we'll have some fun.
Okay.
Hey Conservatives of Texas, Established 2019, Alex De Anda here. Uh, once again with one of our podcasts with uh, Jason Pina today. He is running for uh, City Council there in Dallas, Fort Worth. Uh, before I say Dallas, Fort Worth, do you guys, do you guys? We say it all the time, when folks say it around here, do y'all say, hey man, this is Fort Worth, what's going on?
When you said Dallas, Fort Worth, I went, eh, no. That's like a cousin, we don't, we don't claim, we don't claim Dallas.
Okay, well, my apologies.
I'm joking, I'm joking. Well, you know, it's, it's uh, we, we like to, we like to just call ourselves Fort Worth. We're, 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 we're the smallest big city or biggest, smallest. You know, we even have a saying, don't Dallas my Fort Worth. A little bit slower down here and a little bit more conservative over here.
I see, okay.
I know, I know, they, they always put Dallas, Fort Worth, but um, yeah, I know.
Well, listen, we're so glad to have you on today and uh, you know, talking to you over the course of the last couple of days, I can tell you that I'm a, I'm a, I'm a Jason Pina fan for sure. Uh, we've had some good talks. Uh, for you folks out there that'll be watching this later on, um, know that you can go to Conservatives of Texas, uh, Established 2019 on the YouTube, also on Facebook. And uh, look into all the videos that we're doing and uh, we're pushing the uh, the uh, the umbrella and the flag of conservatism all across the state. Hopefully it uh, saturates throughout the uh, the nation. So before we start today, I would like to uh, begin in prayer, if that's alright with you, Jason?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Dear Father in heaven, we love you, Lord. And uh, we just ask in all things that you go before us and um, in this, in this moment, in this interview, uh, that you would uh, be next to us, that you would steer us in the right direction, that you would uh, give us discernment, that you would give us first and foremost in all things, peace. Uh, in all, we love you, Lord. Uh, you are King of Kings and Lord of Lords, in Jesus mighty name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Alright, get my hat back on. So, Mr. Pina, you are running for City Council, District Nine. How many seats uh, are on this uh, City Council at the current time?
They're currently nine, and after this, uh, after May sixth, there'll be eleven.
Is that right?
We just added two more. Yeah, and you know, unfortunately, uh, Latinos, we're forty percent, forty percent over here. And we only have currently one Latino on City Council. It's Carlos Flores for uh, for Northside. So, I'd like to see more representation.
Okay, and you know, I wanna, I wanna be clear with folks out there, that isn't just a heritage thing or a cultural thing. That is the actual uh, theme of the Constitution, when it says, there is no taxation without representation. And so everyone, listen, if you're forty percent, I think you're hitting the nail right on the head, Jason. I mean, if you're at forty percent, I, I would like to think that you could get more representation coming out of your immediate community. So, how long have you been there in District Nine? And, and what roots do you have there that uh, the folks could, could really uh, connect to?
Well, I like to tell people I'm deep fried, country fried, and even refried right here in Fort Worth. And so what that means is I was born and raised right here, me and my wife. Uh, we went to elementary, middle to high school, right here in District Nine. Um, my, our, our businesses are local. Our kids go to public school right down the street, everything's in District Nine. We, we, our home actually used to be District Six, and they just changed that also to be in District Nine. So, everything kinda worked out for me. And so I, but I, I'm knitted into this community. So I know every road that has a pothole. I know every street light lamp that needs changed. Every sewage hole that, that is clogged up.
Mm-hmm.
I've had it, I've, I've, I've lived over here all my life, and I love my.
Good. You know, uh, we did some uh, campaigning down there, and I don't know if it was thirty-five, you know, we were talking a little bit earlier where you're raising your flag and whatnot. Uh, we've, we've actually uh, helped uh, Fabian Cordova.
Yeah, yeah.
And uh, he's a good, he's a friend of ours and uh, um, Bobby Rios, I believe that's his name, yeah. And then of course, you know, we know Elba and, and, and the rest of the guys. And I think you guys are really, really in the nitty gritty of the battlefield, because it just seems like uh, Fort Worth is one of the last uh, of the, of the conservative frontiers in that area. You know, north, north Texas. So, when you see these types of um, things occurring right around you as we speak, literally, what does it do to your, to your, to your blood? I mean, uh, do you have to go get your blood pressure checked every six weeks? I mean, what, how do you, how do you contend with that, being right in the middle of this? Because we know it's a battleground.
You know, it keeps me up at night. I sit and contemplate, and I look at my children, and I ask myself, you know, what are they gonna say one day? When we don't recognize this community, they're gonna ask me, what'd you, what'd you do dad? Did you do something about it? Did you, did you try to stop it? And that's why I decided to run. Uh, when me and my wife grew up around here in Fort Worth, we used to ride our bikes and be out, playing outside until the street lamps came on, or you know, until I heard my father whistle. And it was clean and it was safe. And now I look at it, and it doesn't look like the Fort Worth I remember. I want my kids to grow up in a safe, clean, clean environment like I did. But there's a lot of things that are happening out here that are negatively affecting the south side of Fort Worth, District Nine. For instance, um, they put a bike lane on Hemphill Street, uh, which is a big main area, street in, 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 I like to say my body, but uh, it just in my area of south side, Fort Worth in our area. And so there was two lanes going north to Fort Worth, two lanes going south. And they took um, pretty much the wee hours of night, they put a bike lane out there, and there was no sign. And, and we, we fought, we brought that up, hey, there was no sign, um, there's no sign in Spanish to let people know that they're gonna put this bike lane up to get the community's opinion and input. And the bike lane has affect, negatively affected this community so bad. Nobody drives down this bike lane. I went down there with the GoPro and I asked all the neighbors and patrons, I said, how do you feel about this bike lane? Um, they said, no, causes a lot of car wrecks, people are getting hit. Um, we don't wanna drive down there at five PM, the train comes, it's congested. You know, I, I stopped at a barber shop, he said, hey, I used to get customers. Now, it's like it cut it fifty percent. Now I only have one lane and, and from two, and people just don't wanna come down here. And just things like that, that have really made me, made my blood boil.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm not running for uh, Fort Worth ISD, but there was some things going on in my kid's school that, that prompted me to get out and speak also. You know, we had gotten a letter saying they wanted to uh, teach our children sex education. And we wanted a little bit more information and we couldn't get it. So, uh, after looking, looking, looking a little bit deeper, we found out they wanted to take the word male and female from sex education books. And that was the first time I decided to go to um, Fort Worth ISD and speak. And, and kind of, everything kinda went from there. But yeah, if, I got, we gotta get a hold of this, cuz we're gonna turn around one day and this is gonna be, they're gonna have a bunch of little apartment buildings out here, and they're gonna run everybody out.
Mm-hmm. This bike lane situation, uh, what kinda data do you have as far as, I, I mean, I know you described some of the things, but are we looking at uh, twelve months worth? I mean, how long's it been there?
Hmm, it's been here, let's say about a year, almost a year. Um, I'll have to get that data. But from, from talking to everyone and from walking down the bike, that bike lane, I didn't see anybody using that. Nobody, I mean, even the Palatero, the Mexican. Crazy, let's drive down that bike.
Mm-hmm. So what do they do? They, 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 they originally had what, four lanes? They condensed it down to two lanes, one going east or west, or whatever the case is. How, how does it look? How did it look before, now how does it look?
Well, okay, well, you know, there was two lanes, two lanes going north, two lanes going south.
Yeah.
Um, they, they painted, it's just, it's just paint. So, you know, it's one lane now, and, and then they have paint that kinda comes out and, and, and you know, some people park, park there, they're able to park on the side of Hemphill now, with a bike lane. But it's, it's only paint. Um, and the good thing is that my hopes is if I get elected for District Nine, I'm gonna encourage the city to put that, put it back. It's, I, you know, I considered, well, how much tax dollars would it take? They didn't add any sidewall, they didn't bust any concrete, it's just paint. So, I think it's something that we could do. It's, it's uh, it's not, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an expensive project at all. But I haven't seen anyone use the bike lane.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody I've spoken to, they haven't seen anybody use the bike lane. If anything, the, the car, the crashes are from cars that, that don't wanna, that don't wanna wait, because it's one lane, and so they'll go around and they'll drive on the bike lane. And maybe someone doesn't want them to go in front of them, so that, you know, so they, inside, and it just causes crashes. Uh, but I'm sure there's data out there, and I, I'll get that to you. But I promise you, it's uh, nobody's riding down that, it's dangerous.
Yeah, you know, this morning, I, I went near a bike lane here in Amarillo, um, on the west end, and uh, it was by a school, an elementary school, and I didn't see one person on the bike over there. I'm not saying that it didn't happen, but yeah, I, I think that um, um, the kryptonite for any project is the actual data and the historical optic that we see in real time. Uh, you would think that, okay, in these communities, we need a bike lane, but yeah, but what's, why? I mean, we, we don't see people on bikes, so why are y'all doing that, you know? So, I do wanna correct something, I did say Robert Rios, but it's Brian Rios, I don't know if you. So I apologize, Brian, for getting your name wrong on that. Um, so, what are some resolutions, um, when it comes to, I know that you wanted to remove the paint, it's, and that's a good thing that, that's all it is, right there. Some of the pros and cons, um, in District Nine that you've seen? Uh, what are some good things that you, that you uh, really hold on to and you really love when you were growing up? And that they're still kind of implemented? And what are some things that are, you know, some negatives? You know, positives and negatives over the course? How old are you?
I'm forty-three years old.
Okay, forty-three, so, you know, from the age of fifteen to, to now, what are some things you can pull on, on both ends of the spectrum that are? Yeah.
Well, I know that the bike lanes, I'm, I'm not against bike riding, I think it's great. I would like to start programs where they have bike riding into parks.
Mm-hmm.
Make trails. Um, a lot of, when I was young, I rode my bike everywhere.
Sure.
And I think that if we could get the kids off of the computers, the laptops, and get them outside again, I think it'd really help their mental health and maybe prevent crime. Um, right, like uh, some good, good and bad things. I saw that they were building two new baseball fields out at a park. Uh, we used to call it Echo Park, now it's um, Elva Camacho's uncle, she's gonna get, she's gonna get mad at me. Last name is Vas, uh, Vasquez, uh, uh, something, Cecil Vasquez Park, they just renamed it. But, so, there was a neighborhood uh, association meeting at Echo Park, um, was it Heights? Uh, Worth Heights? And they were showing three new maps of the baseball fields. And I was like, okay, good, that's great, awesome, man. And then I said, hey, um, are you guys gonna have any lights out here? And they said, no, we didn't, we didn't budget for lights. And I said, well, why wouldn't you have lights? You know, I know right now at five PM, sometimes it gets dark. And, and then it's also, it's a little rough out there, so it would prevent, it would keep, you know, safety concerned. And, and I, I almost felt like it was a slap in the face. It brought me back to when I was a kid, I used to play basketball, Rosemont Park. Um, every, off the seminary, every time I needed a drink of water, the water fountain. Every time I needed to use the bathroom, it was in the bathroom. So I would have to go inside this, this um, tennis court building where they had tennis. And I would go in there and I'd ask, do you take, you know, get a drink of water or use the bathroom? And I always felt like they really didn't want me inside there, like I was, I was a problem. And, and I would look at the people that were out playing tennis, and I would ask myself, are these people from this neighborhood, or are they driving from somewhere else and coming to use, you know, our park? And so whenever they said there was no streetlights, I felt like, again, like, okay, here I am in the situation where there's something here that's for me, but they almost kinda don't really want me there. They want me to leave at a certain time. Um, and then a little, going a little bit deeper, it seemed like they were building this baseball field for other parts of Fort Worth, or to come out to use that facility for professional baseball teams.
Mm-hmm.
Like the, the sluggards or something like that. And, you know, they said that to have lights out there would be really expensive. And I, I didn't believe them. I said, well, what about solar power? I mean, this doesn't have to be professional lighting, but just for some lighting out there.
Mm-hmm.
So they went, they, they, they went ahead and they, everybody, they started asking the same question, raising their hands. And from my understanding, they're gonna go back to the drawing board and add lights. But the lady who's handling this, this is, she's the one that represents District Nine. And, and that's, that's what I'm going for. And just growing up, born and raised here, I just feel like I'd be a voice um, for the people here. And, and I know how it feels to, to feel like, like we're second class here, we're, a lot of our tax dollars, I see they're being spent in certain areas, but they're not being spent through all, out Fort Worth. You know, we have streets over here that need li, lamps, lighting. There's dark areas over here. And, you know, if you go down the street Magnolia or Fairmount, it looks like they're changing out their lamps for the third time to, to a new, new kind.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's really what prompted me to, to get in this race, and it's gonna be a fight. Um, I'm not a politician, I'm just a guy who grew up in the neighborhood that loves his community. And so I'm gonna keep going, and I, I wanna be a voice for the forgotten. I like to say the forgotten, because there's a lot of streets out here, there's a lot of neighborhoods that have been forgotten.
Mm-hmm, well, good. Now, um, this individual that you mentioned, how many terms have they served so far?
This is her first term, so, um, two years terms, so, um, she's, she's running again, and, and it's a two-year term.
Yeah. Um, one thing that um, when it comes to campaign season, it really, or this is your first time uh, doing something like this. Um, uh, is that correct? This is like.
Yeah, yeah, it's my first time.
What, what have you, in this short period, um, has anything surprised you? Like, you didn't.
Oh, yeah.
You heard, but you, you know, wha, what are some things that are kind of, uh, if, if you can speak on it? I don't know if you can or not, but uh.
Well, I mean, besides like a couple of my signs being pulled up, um, which is, that's politics. I just never thought it would be me, you know, and, and, you know, just the guy from the neighborhood. But um, just the whole establishment, I've had a few people tell me, you know, Jason. Um, so the very last day, you could, I was the only one that was uh, opposing, uh, opposing, um, the current representative for District Nine. The last day, two more people got in, and they had told me that I should drop out, because now we could possibly split the boat and. And I said, wait a minute, um, why are you telling me to drop out? I, I joined, I was in here first.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and, and this is a few people that had called me, but pretty much it was, Jason, you don't have any money. You don't have any endorsements from these big, you know, these big, big politicians. So, you need to back down, because we want this, this person to win. And of course, they told me that they're gonna come after your character, they're gonna come after this, they're gonna come after that. And uh, my, I, I talked to my wife and, and I said, babe, you know, I, you know, my, my answer, but I'm gonna let you help me decide, because you're in this with me. You're my wife, and whatever happens to me is gonna happen to you. And she said, Jason, she said, it can't be like this, it can't be this way. How can the establishment pick who runs, or who wins, or anything? People, the people vote who wins office. I said, I agree. And she said, no, I want you to stay in. And so I'm in, and honestly, it's almost helped me, because it spread like wildfire about a couple of people approaching me to drop out. And, and, and most of these people have, were born and raised here, um, they don't represent the community. Um, some of these people come from New York, come from California, come from Washington, and this and that. Um, they do have degrees, I don't have a law degree, I don't have a degree in computer science, but I do have experience being born and raised here. So, but, you know, it's politics. I already knew it was gonna happen when I got in. I had already prepared myself, my wife, that we were gonna have opposition. And so, it's, it's, it's nothing I, I can't, you know, I can't handle. And but, I got a lot more support whenever the word got out, and people would work to support me. And, and I'm really, I'm really happy about that.
Well, that's good. You know, I have a saying, bigger calves beat, beat the bigger wallets. Uh, if you've got the uh, energy, and if you have a team grassroots, we'll, we'll outrun it every single time. Uh, we've seen that with the truck drivers, just that last year in the national election. You know, he beat, he beat the incumbent that uh, had much, much more money. And this guy was just a truck driver in, in one. So, the political climate, it, it's one thing when you're facing the obvious enemy, but whenever it's in your own, you know, uh, arena of folks that are supposed to be like us when it comes to being, um, you know, conservative and fiscally uh, responsive to uh, the, the situation and our immediate proxy, whenever they're rising up against us, that's just, it can be a little discouraging. But, you know, um, I'm glad you're fighting the good fight, and you're, and you're, and you're pushing through. So, uh, what I would tell folks out there is to do your due diligence.
Yes.
On the uh, on the candidate, uh, go past that one page and, and really read, you know what? Contact, contact, Jason.
Yes.
He'll talk to you, he'll let you know.
I appreciate that.
Yeah, the, the uh, the word of God says that you shall know them by their fruit. And the kryptonite to all these folks that uh, have all the dollars and all the money is uh, time and the history. Like, you can look and see what they've actually accomplished, you know? And endorsements, those are good, but honestly, the greatest endorsement is your, is what you've done to date. And it sounds like what you've told me, uh, from all the things that you, you know, going down to the school board, talking to them, you're vested, you're, you're, you're involved, and so, good for you. So yeah, I'd encourage all those folks out there to really exercise your due diligence and uh, look into the candidates. So do you have a, do you have a website you wanna share with folks or anything?
Yes, it's uh, Jay, it's, it's Jason for F O R, and then Fort, so it's abbreviated F T Worth dot com. Jason for Fort Worth dot com. And you can see my biography, and if you'd like to make a donation, I'm building a war chest. But um, this all, this started about four years ago, where uh, me and my wife would do things in the community, small things. We gave out um, backpacks with supplies to kids at, at our parking lot. It was called Parking Lot Pull-Up, and then a year after, there was a massacre in El Paso. We needed some typo blood, so we got our friends together. I wanted to do something greater, I felt like God was telling me, and my wife said, I'll make a deal with you. You open our office, once we purchase it, we were growing so fast. She said, get it open, and I'll give you my blessing, you can go run for City Council. And that's where I'm at. Uh, but, you know, I, yeah, I, I can, I'll, if you call me, I'll answer the phone. Um, I consider myself a servant, no matter what happens, I'll be in my district, doing things in the community. Um, I got a, I got a lot of attention one time, where I walked down Hemphill Street, picked up trash. Um, a buddy of mine, Ricardo Ovita, he has a thing called No Se Vendido, it's Hemphill's Not For Sell. And that's basically because the city was buying a lot of these properties, and they were building these apartment buildings. And they were pretty close to the residents, and people were saying, hey, I'm using the bathroom, and I'm looking up, and these people, they can, they can stare right into my, my, my bathroom. And so, um, and then with the bike lane, uh, me and him both didn't agree with that, and that, that's, that's how I got involved. But I'm always gonna be here, no matter what. Um, and not because I, I don't have a choice, but because I love my community, and I love, I love the people, everyone. Everyone here. And well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna turn around one day and just not reckon, recognize my beautiful city, Fort Worth. The people, um, you know, it's funny, because, you know, I watched this movie Avatar. I'm sure a lot of people left that movie, and they said, oh, what a great movie. The Navi, the native people are fighting against big government coming into our land and trying to steal our resources. And then they leave. And I said, you know what? This is really what's going on right here in Fort Worth. We're the, we're the Navi, we're the natives, we're the indigenous here. And we're just trying to save our community from big government, from these people that are coming in. They're buying, you know, these, these houses, they're knocking them down, they're building, um, they're called stealth, uh, stealth homes. Um, like, it's like a, there's, there's just like a square big home, they're putting concrete over the grass. They're building a, um, they're not for families, they're for unrelated people that, that need a place to stay for a day, up to twenty-nine days, it could be up to ten unrelated people. And um, that really doesn't match the, the fam, the families here, and I don't want it to change.
Mm-hmm.
So if you love that movie Avatar, Way of the Water, or the first one, hey, well, guess what? This is, this is, this is the real thing right here. So, on May sixth, when you vote, consider voting on a native Fort Worth, Fort Worth Texan, uh, right here in the district, that just wants to keep, keep the traditions here and keep the culture the same here.
When, when you describe the concrete layout, I, I don't, I don't see that being, being much different than a prison. You know, that's all concrete too, and it just seems like they wanna, uh, they don't want folks to have property ownership anymore. They, they wanna bring people or bring ideas in that are duplexes, apartments and whatnot, that's going to uh, prevent a lot of ownership. And they just want renters, not buyers, and it just seems like a pattern. You know, last time I was there, I kept hearing about Hemphill. And there was a gentleman that was really, really adamant about his um, his disdain for what they were doing. His name was Chaco. And yeah, do you know, yeah, and uh, man, he was, he was on fire, and Elba was too. And uh, this Hemphill situation, uh, what are we looking at? Is that um, is that a historic area there in Da, in Fort Worth, excuse me? And is it something that seems, in your opinion, they just want to wipe it off and reset with a different type of vision altogether? And they're forcing these people out. Wha, what is it, is that close?
That's just right on the head, that's what's happening. It's a historic neighborhood, and if you do a historic overlay, you'll see, you know, that they're wanting to change the whole layout. Um, from what I heard, it was called like a five-minute city. Um, they, I, I, I really feel like they're opposed of mom and pop businesses here. Um, you know, maybe they don't want people to drive anymore, maybe they want them to Uber. They just wanna be dependent on the government or certain people. But I wanna promote uh, generational wealth for the people that live here. Invest in their homes, invest in their properties, invest in their businesses. So they can, so their children's children, um, because that's all we want. We, we want, you know, we want to provide something better for our children and our children's children. Our children and our children's children. And it's just disheartening when you see these companies, they come. They're buying these places and, for instance, I just saw that somebody just bought the uh, this old, it was a Catholic. Uh, school called Our Lady of Victory, Victory. And so they bought it. And there's a statue out there that everybody always recognized and it was, it was Virgin Mary and. And and that's how you knew, hey, this is right here in Fort Worth. The school's here for at least. Eighty years, a long, a long time. But whoever bought, the investors who ever bought it, they, they took that statue and. And when people saw that it was gone, everybody was like, hey, what's going on? And this is just like a historical landmark. And so we're trying to reach out to those, to those investors. And if you're ever watching this, you know, I, I ask, you know, uh. Give, 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 you know, grace, you know, please bring that back to us so we can put that somewhere. So. We can have that, that, that sentimental to the, to the people of Fort Worth. You know, even if we can put it on a corner or some, someplace, but, you know, uh, if we have to get together and buy it, however, whatever we have to do. But um. There, yeah, there, whoever, whoever's in charge right now. Is not asking the community what we want. Um. The lady, she, she, she doesn't come to the community, our community events. You won't see her at our, our neighborhood associations. And and if you do, people are asking her questions. And she's gone and she's leaving and we got, you know, we got receipts, you know, we, we, we have video and people are trying to talk to her and. And Steven Chaco, you know, he's really passionate about that. I've, I've seen him, you know, saying, hey, you know, you have to, we have questions. And I've seen people tell him, hey, you're not from this neighborhood and he is from this neighborhood. He has, he has his property on Hemphill. Um, and and it's just, it's almost like the natives are fighting. These, these elites, these career politicians. And and they're trying to take over. They're pushing their agenda and they're not asking the community what we want. It's almost like they don't care. And that's why I bring up the Avatar because. I'm reaching out to everyone, no matter what side you are, because it's a nonpartisan race. So I'm, my name is Jason and I'm running for my community. And what I want are things that universally, I want people, I want to take care of these potholes out here. I want more lighting in the area. You know, I, I want to address the crime, the homelessness. This is universal. But if, 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 if you like what I'm saying and, and if you liked that movie Avatar, well, hey. Vote for a guy that's just like, like, like the, the natives. You know, I, I, I want what's best for my community. And I want to be the voice for all of us. But I really do believe that there's the forgotten out here that don't have a voice. And I represent them. I represent the forgotten. And there's a lot of conservatives uh like me. A lot of us are not culturally conservative and, and this is our culture, so respect it. We believe in God. We believe in family. We believe in, you know, hard work. We believe in our Second Amendment, right? So. You know, you come to my, you know, our, our, our community will respect the culture.
Definitely. Very, very well said, uh, Mr. Pina. Are there some meet and greets or some events that you have? Um, lined up that folks could, um, you know, get to shake your hand and and whatnot, if you don't mind going over a couple of those?
I have, I have a big one coming up on March twenty-sixth. It's called Springing to Fort Worth. And it's going to be at twenty-six zero eight West Dixon Street in Fort Worth, Texas. And we're going to have, um, I'm gonna have some people to help register folks to vote. And the good thing is that it's on March uh twenty-sixth, so um. You'll have time to get your registration form to vote in this election for city council. But we're going to have a lot of neighborhood, uh, local businesses, vendors here. We're gonna have three local country singers. Um, we have Adrian Garza. He's gonna be performing. Along with uh Christopher Hernandez and Louis the Singer. They just made a song called, um, you know, and it's not out. And and they just made it and it reminded me of my campaign. It's, it's, it's almost, it's kind of like a come and take it song, but it's about how. You know, we, we, we are as Texans, you know, you're, you're trying to take our, our, our city from us. All these, these, these big, you know. These big wigs, I, I don't know, buying our properties and they're trying to change everything and. And 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 it's a really good song. And and once I, once I get that, hopefully they'll let me use it for my campaign.
Nice plug.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're gonna have food trucks. We're gonna have food trucks on the left. It's, it's gonna be inside uh on, on a property out here. And so there's a stage, there's gonna be food trucks on the left, there's gonna be vendors on the right. And it's just gonna be a real good time. And I, I, I'm pretty sure it's gonna be great weather around and on that date of March twenty-sixth.
Well, good.
And then other places where I'm talking, you know, at, at uh neighborhood associations and things like that. I have so many. I, I couldn't plug them all on here, but. I have one every day. I'm going, I'm speaking and and I love it. I've never met a stranger.
Right. I, I will encourage folks out there that are going to be registering uh individuals to vote. Uh, I guess called registrars to really um. Ask anyone and everyone in your proxy immediately. Um, don't think, don't get complacent. Uh, thinking that that person you asked two years ago is, is still registered. They, they may be, but there's a lot of redistricting that occurs. And it causes problems. A person can actually vote nationally and and statewide, but when they go to vote locally, if they've moved or whatnot. A lot of people depend on the D M V and they think, well, they're gonna take care of it. No, we had, we've had situations where. Uh, the precinct has changed. They go to vote and they're not in the same precinct anymore. So I would encourage uh folks out there to go to, uh, you can go, you know, Google it, am I registered?
Yes. And there, there's also a website called One Address. It's O N E. Address dot Fort Worth gov dot com.
Okay.
Oneaddress dot FortWorthgov dot com. And if you go, put your, you go in there and put your address and you press reference. It will show you which district you're in, but more, most importantly, you need to check on future district. And that's where, you know, the confusion might come. So just make sure you look on future district, because you could be, a lot of them now from, from nine or an eleven. And some from eleven went to nine or.
That's right. That's right. Um, in my precinct, we have five thousand forty registered. And in that five thousand forty, we have over six hundred that are in suspense. They can vote, like I said, a national and and statewide, but at the local, they can't. And and I don't think a lot of them even know it, uh, Jason. And so I think that creates voter apathy. You know, folks will go and they'll say, hey, I voted for the president. I voted for whatever, what kind of, and I don't think that there's just. A lot of time where people are explaining what's going on here. I wish our um. I'll say my wishes for bigger things, but, but that is a big thing i- in, in and of itself, but uh. If you're a voter, go to that website, check it out. You, you have to get re- re-registered if you're, if something happened before thirty days before early elections. So I think that's gonna. April twenty-fourth, so it's, it's coming up pretty quick. So, um, if you, if you don't mind when this goes on over our page or whatever, go ahead and type that in there so folks. Get to that, utilize that resource, Jason. Um, hey, listen, um. Before we close out, just hit the folks with two or three things that you want to do, that you want to see. And uh, where your heart is and then uh we'll close out. Uh, it's, it's been a joy and a pleasure talking to you, Mr. Pina, and I wish you all the best, okay?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Well, folks, again, you know, I, I, I'm born and raised here and I want to represent. All of Fort Worth. I want to address the potholes out here. There's a lot of purple streetlights. That um, that need to be changed. Um, they said that it's a faulty L E D bulb. But from my understanding, it, it's, it's, it's showing you that it needs to be changed. So we gotta change those out. I want to address this crime out here. We gotta start mentor systems, um, programs with the homelessness. We gotta, we gotta figure something out. Um, even give them jobs, maybe picking up trash, painting by the bundle. We gotta do something and. And I want to be the voice for all of Fort Worth, especially the forgotten. So please consider me when you vote on May sixth. God bless you and you guys have a great day. Thank you for having me, brother. I appreciate you.
Hey, my pleasure. It's a joy and I will be lifting you up in prayer and your wife and your family. Uh, Conservatives of Texas, uh, established twenty nineteen. I do want to let you guys know that we are having two forums here, uh, locally in Amarillo, Texas. Uh, April eleventh, we're gonna be having a candidate forum at Accelerate Church, forty-four hundred South Crockett. We're gonna have uh city council only at that forum. We have about uh sixteen in four uh. Um, seats. So uh, please come out to that. That'll be starting at six thirty. The very next week, April eighteenth, we'll be having a mayoral uh forum. Uh, with uh those that are, are stepping up to run for mayor at the uh Amarillo Botanical Gardens. And that's gonna be, I believe, at six thirty as well. So uh, keep a lookout for those dates. Really do appreciate you guys. Uh, that are gonna be tuning into this, uh, Mr. Pina. A great joy, great pleasure. And uh, hey, you're welcome. God bless you, okay?
Yes, sir. You guys have a good day.